Okay, we got everybody. Oh, everybody hear us? Andy?
Yes, sir.
Colin and Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm gonna call this meeting of Sumter County to order and we will begin as we always do with an invitation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Hasty's gonna do both for us tonight, and before he begins praying, we will have a moment of silence during which anyone may pray, meditate, or not as they wish, and then Councilman Hasty will give us the invitation and he will lead us to the plate. Yes, pray.
Godfather, we thank you for the showers of blessings you continue to rain down upon this great city. Father, we pray for our leaders of this nation right now, our president, all of our governors, and certainly our mayors and other leaders. Help us to continue to make those decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Father, we lift up to you now those families that have lost loved ones because of the COVID nineteen virus. We ask that you give them the joy that only you can do. We just thank you for this day now, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which extends its endless vision, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
And we want to especially remember Councilwoman I O. Dwyer. She lost her husband last week and was just buried and understandably, she's not here with us tonight, but our love and our prayers go out to Ms. Dwyer. Approval of the minutes in our May five twenty twenty meeting, is there a motion or do we need to make changes? Mr. Davis moves, Mr. Merchant seconds that we accept in May five twenty twenty minutes as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's no. And they are unanimously approved. Moving into whole business, we have on here for continuing the discussion of the budget for twenty twenty one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as we had a budget workshop last night, we updated, and council, it's on the screen there for everyone. Our original general fund deficit of just over one point seven million is now down to three hundred eighty thousand nine thirty one. Again, we've been doing a fair amount of work in that general fund to get it to balance and discuss, like we did last night, several of the things we've been working on to try to get it down where we have a good plan for next fiscal year. Again, statewide, we have to balance the revenues with expenditures to have a balanced budget, and we're very close at this point. We still have several more items that we're working on. We'll continue to, just a little bit later in this meeting, we'll have a budget public hearing, and we'll talk a little bit more. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? Colin or Steve?
Good budget meeting last night. Very informative.
Moving on, then we'll look at final reading of ordinance twenty six seventy seven, which is an annexation on Greenswold Road. Nothing has changed on that?
No change.
Is there a motion?
Move to consider file reading presented.
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Merchant and seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there discussion?
Yes, question. When they talk about use of, I don't know, page two of the document, the use on this site is grandfathered and can continue provided that there is not a discontinuous of the use for a period of greater than six months.
Yes, so that's part of your zoning ordinance? When there's a, any kind of use, that's a non-conforming use, like if it was blank land and today it was proposed, it would have to be under the new ordinance. So that's just stating what is in your ordinance, that if any business ceases to exist for six months, then it would have to comply under the new ordinance.
How is the eighteen months then in the next sentence? Likewise, the property non-conforming site features, and that's it right there, are grandfathered and can remain as is provided, that there is not a discontinuous of the site for a period of greater than eighteen months. What's the difference between that and six months?
I would see beyond just the time period, just the part of the use. So if one is used and then the others are centric to the land itself, so be happy to get the planning director to give a little more insight at the next meeting if you'd like to.
Exactly. Just to understand, you're doing between six months and eighteen months?
Yeah.
And I think that site features there could be certain features.
Yes, sir. It's so many things, like, we'll give you a good list of the features, but if you look at things like parking, anything about site features, parking, maybe retention, landscaping, all of those things.
And then it goes on to talk about the property is currently non-conforming concerning use in site development standards on the county regulations as well, so.
Yeah, because our land use is very similar, most of the time, city and county. So the reason why that's mentioned is currently before the action tonight, it's in the county.
Yeah.
And then after the annexation action, it'll be in the city. So the report's trying to show us that it's grandfathered in the county, but it'll also be the same in the city, so yeah.
And going down to part three, paragraph one, talks of the property, near the bottom of that, number one, land use compared to properties within a pocket of historical industrial land use near south side of the city. What's historical?
It is, quite frankly, it's just older. It's not something that just popped up. Right, no, sir. Just historically, like, if you go back, you know, several decades, where the use of industrial, it was in different places. In the last, say, thirty or forty years, it may be the modern industrial parks of fifteen south, or we just had, we had an industry in different areas, say, Lake City Highway off of Ginn Yard and here was an example, where now a lot of industries are centric in either the North Industrial Park, Jefferson Road, or either fifteen south, but certainly not all. Mr. Merchant's would be another example in a different place.
And when we talk of doughnut holes, I hear a lot about doughnut holes. It's not been on council, it's ten years. Now, do we have a lot of doughnut holes?
Yes, sir. If you look at the map over your right shoulder, I mean, we do, and a lot of that is, is the reason for that is our annexation laws in the state of South Carolina. Really, the power, for the most part, begins in annexation with the property owners. So historically, a lot of the land that's coming to you now for annexation were well into the county at one point, but as the city grows and grows around property, that's where people will talk about the doughnut hole. It looks like it's totally surrounded. But, but most of the time, the reason for a doughnut hole is it was well out in the county and growth happened around it, and so it was originally developed to be in the county. Maybe there was not utilities or services at that time, but now there are, and just like this petition, it's asked to come in to receive city services.
So you still got quite a few remaining?
Yes, sir. And we steadily close them in when it's a good request to council, and council reviews each and every time, as you know. The requests are city services, the answer would be, can we provide city services? So in this case, the answer is yes, and it's a good petition before justice.
What else?
Yeah. Well, a lot of the years have been annexation law that forced, I guess you'd say annexation or creation of a city when you got to a certain density, we never had anything like that. Annexations pretty much controlled by the way in the city. It is controlled anyway, though.
The petition part is, and then the action, as council is acting domain, is really up to you at that one side. Yeah.
Have we got a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. And it is unanimously given final reading, being ordinance number two six seven seven. Next, we have ordinance two six seven eight, which is also annexation of property located on Wise Drive. Everything the same?
Everything's the same.
Is there a motion? Mr. Davis, no moving, and Mr. Hasty seconding. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. And ordinance twenty six seventy eight is given final reading. The ordinance that was twenty six seventy seven. Moving on in our agenda. Lease purchase agreement, ordinance number twenty six seventy nine. This is the final reading as well. Mr. Harris, everything the same?
This actually missed.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Sorry. Mr. Merchant seconds that we give final reading to ordinance twenty six seventy nine. Discussion.
I do have a question about it. The lease purchase that's represented here, is this in our twenty one budget, or will this be on the end of our current year budget?
We're gonna propose an amendment to include some of the expenditures asked for in the twenty twenty one budget that we've added to this, that we want to propose to add to the twenty twenty budget. There's a few items. The low interest rates were a factor, and also the original budgeted lease was a lot lower than the normal that we usually have, so we felt like it was a good idea to add this additional equipment.
Councilman Davis, so just to restate that, it's all of twenty twenty normal, and then we did do to, like Ms. Green said, when we were looking at the proposed twenty twenty one budget, it was more advantageous because we just weren't borrowing as much this year to go ahead and get several pieces off of next year, and as you can see, it's one point eight three percent for a short term, so normally, it would only be the current year would be the answer, but we'll discuss that in just a few minutes with proposed change to twenty twenty. Okay.
What else?
Mr. Harris, I was reading over the request this afternoon, and I learned a new word, appurtenances. And I figured, and I looked it up, it's accessories. So the rescue truck has appurtenances. It's a, it sounds very fancy, but I hope it's just what we need.
The easy word for that is stuff. But important stuff.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor say aye. And ordinance twenty six seventy nine is enacted. You have a final reading. Moving into new business. For Truman Resolution number seven ninety six, sewer line extension project, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have the information in front of you. A little different on this one. We had proposed, we could have had about five, six different visitors, but we only had one bid on the project. This is a sewer line extension. We call it Greenswold Broad Street Extension. It's actually, in behind Chili's, we have a pump station. We put in about twenty years ago, sewer pump station, designed at the time, thinking we had plenty of capacity to take care of what we take care of on that corridor along Broad Street. We never anticipated so many motels being built at the time, which takes up most of our capacity. We could put in a new pump station, or we could run a gravity line and do away with the pump station, the maintenance of a pump station. It'd be very difficult to put another pump station on that site. So we have designed a sewer line to go across the swamp, tie into the fifteen inch truck line that goes back to Broad, right on back through town. One bid, it was four hundred fifty three thousand six hundred dollars. We are satisfied with that one bid. We think it would have been very competitive, and we'd like to recommend, if you would like to do so, rewarding this contract to be in deconstruction. Again, four hundred fifty three thousand six hundred dollars.
Any questions with Harris? Is there a motion?
Mr. Harris, as far as the unit pricing, I guess it's always concerning just to get one bid.
Yeah.
You know, so how does the unit, do we compare the unit pricing for each line item compared to, oh, bids? I guess that'd be the closest way to be able to evaluate the bid.
I tell you, what makes this one extremely high, all this pipe, except for about a couple hundred feet of it, has got to be put on piers all the way across the swamp. We had to get a core permit, took about eight, nine months to get a core permit to be able to cross the swamp and tie into the truck line. And at the time, they, you know, it was pretty, it was pretty wet in there, and we knew what we had to do. And the core was requiring us to do certain things also, but the whole, whole project has to be put on piers going across that swamp, which really ups the price of the entire project. It's not as simple as just laying pipe. You gotta go in and on every joint of pipe, on the end of the pipe, you gotta put piers. So everything is rested on piers through a very muddy, boggy situation crossing that swamp. Again, we not only had to have de-hack permits to cross and do the project, we had to have core engine F permits also.
But, Mr. Merchant, your point about unit pricing, because we always want to make sure, so staff, when they, before they bid out, they'll do their own estimates, and they're well within those estimates, and the nice thing about right now is, like Mr. Harris said, when they were bidding out, it was under wetter conditions. Right now is actually a better time to do it, so if this is favorable, we get it done, this is a good time to get this project done, so.
Our estimate on this project was over four hundred thousand dollars. So we're within the range of what our estimates were in unit prices, and when we figure, we base, we figure everything we gotta do, just like the contract depends on it. We, prior to the bid, do our estimates, and we figure each unit price, everything, and we were over the four hundred thousand dollar mark, so we felt comfortable with it.
One other thing, just for all of councils, we reserve the right at any time to reject any or all bids. So if we were way out of whack, we would scrap it and do it all over again, but we think because of, it's not only within in the numbers we were looking at, but also it's a favorable time to get in that tough job and get in there and get it done. And quite frankly, we've got more being built on the corridor, so it's a good time to get this thing done.
And we feel very comfortable with the contract that we got.
Do we have a motion?
Any other questions? I'll be glad to try to answer.
Motion. Second. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to want to be reassured that the, the funds for this will come out of the water and sewer department. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We had a motion, but not a second.
Oh, second?
The motion made on Mr. Hasty, second on Mr. Colin. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
I've got, I've got a question about it. The way I understand this is this increases our capacity along that Broad Street corridor. This is, this is not a patch up or a fix from something that we've already got there. This is, this is our planning for the future.
This is planning for the future, and it will definitely increase the capacity from what we have with the pump station now. It'll take care of what we think we have in all of that immediate area and where the motels are going, and some other things possibility, but this will take care of that without having the maintenance upkeep, power bills, and all the other things that go along with pump stations. It'll all be gravity flow.
A very similar project would be the one that we did a couple of years ago off of Wise Drive that took care of a bunch of residential areas across Lory Mill, Wise Drive. There's existing pump station. In that case, we had to enlarge the pump station that took care of what we had, but also future. This is the major corridor, think about everywhere from Walmart all the way out to Mason Road, kind of that back area back in there. So we're still, we're very blessed in the community to see restaurants and hotels continuing to expand out there. So as Mr. Harris said earlier, it's, that's a real blessing, but we need to make sure we've got the capacity to not impede any kind of future growth. And that's why this is a good project. We're kind of, it's good timing to get this done.
Twenty years ago, when the pump station was put in, it was hard to anticipate and plan when you really don't know what the plans are gonna be. You anticipate commercial growth, but you didn't even anticipate a chain of motels all the way out, which is, was really, put a lot of strain on the system.
Any other questions? We're gonna call for a vote. All in favor say aye. No? Okay, and Resolution seven ninety six is passed with a vote of four one. Mr. Merchant being against. Okay, yes, our final is in addition to the agenda. It's South Carolina Department of Transportation Project Resolution. Are you gonna present this to us? Can you hear us?
There you go.
There we go. If it is a city administrator's pleasure.
Yes.
All right. Council members, mayor, before you is a Resolution number seven ninety seven, which is a municipal state highway project agreement for the proposed improvements at Pinewood Road and McCray's Mill Road. This is a SUAT-funded infrastructure improvement project that's been in the works for several years. The project has just been let bid by SCDOT, and prior to starting on these improvements, a agreement from the city of Sumter must be executed, which is required by the state, state law, which is South Carolina Code fifty seven five eight twenty, which requires municipal agreement prior to improvement of state highway network roads within city limits. And so this project, there's a one-page resolution, which lays out that this, this agreement is kind of the overriding agreement between the municipality and SCDOT. It's a standard agreement that SCDOT has provided us. We've reviewed it, and there are no, no issues we know of at this time that would preclude the city from entering this agreement. All funding for these improvements is provided through the Guide Share Fund at SUAT, which is eighty percent federal dollars and twenty percent state match. So, so all the money is from outside the city that will be used in this project.
Any questions of Mr. Kelly?
I got one. Mr. Kelly, thank you. Quick question on, trying to see, say it, the McDonald's property and Ace Hardware. Will that be a write-in, write-out?
Yes.
Okay, good. So if people try to come across all the way coming out of McDonald's?
Right. So the, this project's main improvement areas are raised medians on each of the four legs, which, which are on aerial image that was provided to you. There's, there's, I believe it's a bluish color that's in the center. Those indicate the length of the raised median. There's also going to be wider lanes width, so you'll see on, on McCray's Mill, there will be two lanes in each direction that will go through the intersection, and so there will be turn lanes where there's currently a single turn lane from McCray's Mill to Pinewood, and from Pinewood to McCray's Mill, there will be two dedicated turn lanes, left turn lanes, but there will still be two through lanes in the project area. There are also a couple of driveway closures, most notably the, the gas station that's located on the southwest quadrant. One of those two current driveways will be closed to, to reduce conflict points at the intersection, the one closest to the intersection itself. And then over at the Rite Aid, I believe, one of those, that entrance that's on McCray's Mill, I believe is going to be closed as well, and the Rite Aid will still have access from within the Walmart site as well as an access on Pinewood Road.
Do you know if there'll be any additional street lighting at this intersection?
There is not, to my knowledge, a plan to increase street lighting at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Kelly, I know this probably was brought about because of the addition of Walmart, but Sumter hide traffic, was that, there's an awful lot of traffic going in in the mornings on a normal morning. Has that been taken into consideration?
Yes, sir. The, in fact, this project predates the Walmart being, being constructed. The decision was made to allocate the Guide Share Funds to this intersection improvement based on the ranking system completed in the SUAT's twenty forty long-range transportation plan, which was the previous long-range plan that was developed by the, the Transportation District. And so, yes, you know, the overriding feature of this intersection was safety, the number of crashes, the number of conflict and conflict points, and the traffic, just the sheer volume of average annual daily traffic makes this one of the most heavily traveled intersections in Sumter, in Sumter County, really, outside of the Broad Street Commercial Corridor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Kelly, we're, we're actually trying to hit all of our most dangerous intersections, are we not?
Yes.
To get all of those as money is available. Okay, anyone else? I'm gonna call for a vote. I'm gonna call for a motion. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Merchant moves, and Mr. Hasty seconds that we approve Resolution seven nine seven. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. And it is approved unanimously. And wonder of wonders, it's six o'clock on the dot.
Thank you, Kyle.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we do have two public hearings, and I know council regrets that we cannot have these, as we normally have public hearings, but in the present time, we feel that it is necessary to continue with the meetings as we're conducting them now. We have made an effort to get public input. I think everyone has read that we've invited public comment through our website and otherwise, and there's an opportunity to observe this on our YouTube channel, and we have a place set up within the office where someone can come if they like and be a part of this. So with that, let me just say, we'll conduct this as we do public hearings. I guess I will ask for people who are against, if you are for, if we have any comments in that regard, we will begin by having a presentation on, well, actually, the community development budget. That is the consolidated annual performance evaluation report, which we need to approve. And I guess on that, we're asking for comments.
Comment, yes.
And then on the budget, we're asking for comment on that too, so there will not be a typical public hearing in that we don't have property. And then on the budget, we're asked for comment on that too. So there will not be a typical public hearing in that we don't have property in question here. So with that, I'm just gonna open the Community Development Project um public hearing and just say that the city received three hundred and six thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars in community development block grant funds from the Housing and Urban Development uh Department in two thousand and nineteen. Most, most of the money has been spent. City met the objectives set out in their annual action plan for that year. Citizens participated in the budget preparation process in the fall of two thousand and eighteen, prior to its approval of the budget early in two thousand and nineteen. Now that the program year has ended, the public is invited to voice his concerns on their accomplishments. Public has until June twenty-two, twenty twenty to make comments to the Community Development Department Office on the accomplishments. Uh, Mr. Gaines, is he, well, Mr. Gaines, you're gonna tell us how the funds were used.
I recognize you. Honorable Mayor and members of council, we acknowledge our block grants and funds for two thousand and nineteen were utilized as follows. We demolished seven structures to alleviate light as well. We have twenty-two total homes, six by city staff and sixteen by United Ministry, which the city leveraged twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. United Ministry had one hundred and forty volunteers. They put in over four thousand eight hundred and fifteen hours, which equated to one hundred and five thousand two hundred and eight volunteer data by independent uh sector organization. Also, the city has sixty youth in the summer youth program, uh, forty fourteen and fifteen-year-old youth and twenty-eight sixteen-and-up youth. Local companies provide over fifteen thousand dollars of the sixteen and up uh youth salary. Additionally, you YMCA, um, they service twenty LMI youth and they receive a variety of service from camp to after-school programs. They also provided facade grant assistance for three downtown businesses with new sites. And finally, we provide plumbing repair grants for three LMI homes. I am available for any comments.
Okay, well, I don't see anyone at the um site downstairs. We did, we, it was on the screen a minute ago. I don't see anybody there. Did we receive any comments? Did we, by email? Did we receive any comments by email or otherwise for this meeting?
There were no comments received by email.
Okay, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. Thank, thank you, Mr. Gaines. Anything else you want to add?
No, sir, that basically it. Um, as you stated, the kit will be available in my office, which is um located at twelve West Liberty Street, Office H, for review by the public from start in May the twenty-second to June the twenty-second.
So anyone in the public that wishes to make comments can do so by June the twenty-second at your office.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I, Joe?
Yeah.
Uh, Clarence, I want to thank you for what you do. I, I'm amazed at what you do with the money that you have. I think uh, number seems to be about a hundred and thirty-six total youth that we are, we employ. I just think that's something that we need to uh try to improve on is, 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 is keeping more of our young people occupied. We see what's going on now with the United School. They're just restless. And uh, I just want to thank you very much for what you do. I hope one day we get a lot more money that we can do some other things with our youth throughout the summer. Thank you very much.
Oh, Clarence, I want to clarify one thing, Mr. Gaines. Um, we give United Ministries twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
And how much do we calculate? We, they got done?
Um, with the volunteer hours, over a hundred, a hundred and five thousand two hundred and eight dollars. If you equate the volunteer hour service.
A lot, a lot more than we could have gotten done with twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And uh, that's what we have to do is try to leverage that money as best we can. But thank you, Mr. Gaines. Okay, I'm gonna, that, that uh public hearing has been declared closed. I'm gonna open up the uh public hearing on our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We just say that we hate, we can't even have a traditional public hearing, but um cities in South Carolina are required to have a balanced budget and we have to do it by a certain time and we have to have a public hearing. So we have to schedule this public hearing now to make sure we comply with state law. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we will proceed and uh, is anyone aware of any comments that were made by email or otherwise?
Mr. Owens, have we seen any by email before now?
There have been none by email or through the website.
But we, we can remind the public, uh, they can go to sumtersc.gov forward slash public comment or publiccomment@sumtersc.gov. Um, if, if someone still wants to, we'll monitor it, we'll pay attention to it and we'll get with this hamlet and make sure it's incorporated within minutes.
So they will still receive comments that the public has.
Yes.
And we will probably, we, we will hopefully vote on this budget in our meeting, in our second meeting in June, if not before.
Depending on the finalized, probably maybe second meeting. We'll have it for first reading, um, consideration that you're.
We have to enact it by June before, uh, before June thirty. Okay, now I see no one at the public comment place we got set up. So with that, I'll declare the, this public hearing to be closed. Uh, we have completed our agenda, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
It was a pleasure, Phil. So we have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Air, if we may, just for a minute, circle back to the um just notes for your consideration on uh possible amendment to come to you in the near future on the fiscal year twenty twenty budget. So council will look at the sheets in front of you that's sort of straight. Uh, you have yellow and blue and red stripes. Uh, there you go. There's one, there's two in the front.
Yeah.
So simply stated, the coloring, uh, and I apologize for the coloring, but that was my idea. Um, Miss Beth and, and Mr. Jonathan helped us out. So there's three main pieces, uh, as you see highlighted by color. Um, there's general fund, water, sewer, and then we kind of grouped accommodations and hospitality together. And generally speaking, um, the, the largest part of that general fund number is what Mr. Davis asked earlier. Um, his question of the, the lease purchase. So there were, um, the things that we had um, that, that were sort of proposed were dump trucks for public works, parks and gardens, uh, excavator for parts, a small machine, um, compressor for the fire department and firefighter turnout gear. So the, those are all good things. That's why you see it in revenues and expenditures. So um, that was the addition. And again, we think the value of doing an amendment to the, the budget toward the end of the year is when you have your year end and you get your audit report and it compares budget to actual, it lets you have a clean report that the things that throughout the year council has voted on um are actually updated in your budget. So that's the general fund. Water and sewer, if you remember, a, a couple of months back, Mr. Harris asked that, that we do some capital projects through our capital um funds that, that we have set aside to redo capital in water and sewer. And uh, we have like a three-year window, if you remember. So there's multiple projects. So what we're doing there is just taking a piece of the funding that you approved, pull it into this year's budget and we'll, we'll actually make that only the amount that, that we need for this year and then we'll continue next year and the next. So that's, that's why you see water and sewer, same amount coming from capital reserve on that for those projects. And lastly, accommodations and hospitality are two main projects we've been working on for two years. Um, and we completed this year. One was a Granger McCoy project, which was sizable. The other was Memorial Park. Memorial Park, if you want to say, was done as pay-as-you-go hospitality. The rest, we moved, uh, we cleared out sort of any of the fund balances to complete those projects. And what that's done is it's allowed us to get those two projects done. And then next year, we'll hit the next, next couple on the list. So let me stop right there and see if I can answer any questions you might have. Again, this is just um notes for you. We'll actually have a proposed amendment at your next meeting. We'll continue to work on it between now and then.
Any, any questions?
Darren, you said that um, that we cleared out fund balances in the accommodations and the hospitality.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I assume that, that, that's money that we had allocated to something else that we didn't use. Well, we, we never allocated it, so to speak. So at the end of the year, if we hadn't completely spent what we brought in, or maybe sometimes years we get collections more than we budgeted, then that would leave a, a, a growing fund balance. For the last couple of years, we knew we had more projects on the horizon than we had money that would come in in that year. So if you look back a couple of years ago, we actually budgeted fund balance and hospitality in last year's budget. But we didn't get any chance to use it because sometimes the projects happened later, so they were in this year's budget. So what we're just doing is moving that unspent hospitality and accommodations forward to the projects that council had approved. So that being the Memorial Park and the Granger McCoy Swan Lake Improvements Project this year. Um, one of the things going back to the creation of the local hospitality, local accommodations, um, Mayor McAlveen asked the staff at that point, let's do our very best to employ the dollars that come in instead of letting them stack up needlessly, or not needlessly, but I, I think, Mayor, your point was let's let the public see the, the improvements as quickly as we can. Some projects are bigger than others, so it has to add up so we can pay for them. But uh, we've tried to stay consistent with that. So um, as you can see, oh, multiple years, we're, we're doing a pretty good job of, of employing those funds in the current year. So all things being equal, um, this is a fund balance. We're, um, we're employing the funds to get the projects done. So uh, all projects to date that council has asked for have been completed or in the hopper going forward and no projects have had money taken from them to do these projects. Thank you.
I have no action on this tonight.
No, thi- this is just really a draft of, of what, we just didn't want to catch you cold with the first reading of an amendment. These are the major pieces. We will continue to do additional work on, on the COVID-nineteen related uh impacts to our budget. So we just, this was stuff that, that council had already, we had talked about in some form or fashion. So this is sort of the cleanup. And then um, we'll focus a little bit more between now and your next meeting on, on the virus impacts to this current year that we're wrapping up in June thirty. Between now and our next meet, if you have any questions at all, please let us know and we will send you additional information um that hopefully will be further explanatory.
Well, yeah, we have, we don't need an executive session. We need an executive session.
I have a comment I want to make before we adjourn, Joe.
Okay.
At this time?
Yeah.
I pass out to all of you this flyer that some young men circulated. Uh, this flyer came from Florida. And these young men are there here counting money, smoking dope, had alcohol. Uh, they are broadcasting a Mother's Day block party on South Sumter Street and Hart Street. There are over one hundred young people blocking the street. Of course, you got to get a permit to block a street here in the city. And, and this is on Mother's Day. And this was terrible. The people in that area, but they, this party ended with uh automatic gunfire, over thirty round clips were fired, two thirty round clips were fired. We have a lot of veterans in that area, PTSD, and it was just a horrible, for the first time in my life, I was fearful of the level of gunfire that I heard because that was like combat. That was military-style gunfire. So these young people are changing game. People in that area are also very concerned about their safety. Uh, March the twentieth, there were three people shot, same area on Nelson Street. Uh, we had a murder, two blocks on South Main Street, young man shot in the head. Two girls shot two weeks later. A murder on Red Bay just the other week. Now, the people in this particular area feel unsafe, um, uh, unprotected. I don't know what can be done. One thing I have noticed though has been the increased uh police presence since this happened. But they're calling me and saying, what in the world is going on? Because this type of activity reflects bad upon the city of Sumter. Even though it's in one part of town, but you know, we're one city. And to have this level of violence, these young people have, I just don't think it would happen anyplace else in Sumter. And there must be a reason why this happening on, in, in my area. I rest my case.
Well, I, I will have to say, I think that police get somebody arrested for all these things pretty quickly, but that's.
Has anybody been, that's enough, has anyone been arrested for this? If you know this guy, this name and stuff, his picture. And then being a council member, I called that night and reported this and to this day, no one has said a word to me about what's happened. I say, hey, we on topic, this is the case.
I think you reported him.
Or you that, that uh passed that on to.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. No, the chief has left. I'm not hurting. People come to me there and say.
Yeah, I get you. Well, I can tell you, it, it's, they've been working that ever since that night, ever since. Um, we won't talk about the investigation. I apologize, you didn't hear.
I haven't heard a thing. It's kind of, you know, I'm the representative. I need to tell them something because you had, you had meetings. What are you doing?
Okay.
But we have seen police increase presence and I need to make the difference. These young men, these young men, and I, I hate to talk about Atlantic Avenue. These young men are selling drugs in broad daylight. I ride in front of that store every day. Just the other day, I rode through there, this guy pulls up like he's pulling out a McDonald's in front of the store on Atlantic Avenue. Young man walks over to the car, they exchange money and, you know, this is in, this is lunchtime in broad daylight. I don't know why this kind of activity cannot be stopped. If a police car parked in front of that store, don't do anything. That'll stop that activity. But you can't just ride by. And like, we called them that night and they came, there are a hundred people in the street on Hart Street. They came, talked to the people, we just went down, the man came there twice, only saw once. And then they left and then the gunfire started out there. But that crowd was broken up. Because the one, three were gathered, they were like partying, cooking out, music, DJ.
And I did review that in, in great detail and um, there could be more we can talk about.
Please let me know because I need to be able to share because these folks are frustrated and fearful.
And I, I just know the police, they, and this one I'll, I don't understand because I know they have, I, I I know they've broken up things like this because they got advanced knowledge unnoticed. They, they found out about it by their own work and they stopped it before it happened.
There's a young lady in Florida, say, hey, that's where my mama live. And mom, you know, and mom says she's sent this to the police department. And, but it's still, but she don't have the trust, no trespassing signs on her property. So, but anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, well, a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I would like to say aye. I would love. We, we offer.
Thanks, Danny. Appreciate it.
Is unmuted?
Yeah.
I said you all look good on television.
When are we going to meet to decide about continuing these emergency meetings?
The it is not expired yet. We still have time. I've got them dialed in. I don't know that I have, I can give you a quick answer on that. But we're addressing them as they come up. Now, we could, I think it's the twentieth of June.
That's right, Danny.
Is that right?
That sounds familiar.
Yeah.
We'll double check that before the next meeting.
It's the twenty-first of June, so we have two more meetings before that, but we'll, we can continue that if you would like to.
Mister Mayor, what we're looking into, it'll make it a little bit better, I think, for council as we can get back into the council room. We can space enough in there. Looking at having the technology to broadcast where we're doing Zoom now that we have to be in close proximity of camera. If you can operate spaced out in your council chambers, maybe the next step is for us to be able to video council and broadcast it rather than it being on Zoom. We're, we think we have that availability for the next meeting.
Broadcasting, people being to see on their.
Yeah, so we could, just like people can dial in or come into the YouTube channel. We can broadcast to the YouTube channel. We just don't have to use Zoom. You can, you can function like you normally do because we have the spacing in there, but for the public, where they're not going to be a tough folks, we'll be broadcasting. Now we're having a Zoom meeting. It's going to the city YouTube channel. So what would be, you'll all be in the same room. We'll video it go to the YouTube channel.